...celebrate the birth of your son. Lord, we give thanks for the wonderful life that you've given us, for the opportunity to gather as a family, in fact, you're in spirit. We give thanks for our daily blessings. We give thanks for the opportunity to live in a free country where we can make our own decisions. We ask your blessings on this council. We ask your guidance over the decisions that we make. We ask you watch over our servicemen and women as they protect our freedom and our safety forces as they protect our city. For this we pray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
Roll call.
Kara.
Here.
Cole.
Here.
Freebo.
Here.
Heffley.
Here.
Henry. Johnson.
Here.
Kelly.
Here. Lord, a motion is... In a second, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion here to excuse Mr. Henry. I need approval of a minutes on December 3rd, 2012.
Mr. President, I take a motion for approval of minutes on December 3rd.
A motion in a second, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion in a second, minutes have been approved. Elections and appointments, Parker Park, Rick Gorman.
Mr. President, um, tonight, I have the privilege of swearing in our newest firefighter in the department, Andrew Baughman. Andrew, if you would please join Chief Huggins and I up front. After we have about had Chief Huggins tell council a little bit about you. Andrew did an outstanding job, not just in the testing process, but also the interviewing process as well. And I'm sure he'll do an outstanding job for the department and this year that he serves. Andrew, if you would please raise your right hand. I, Andrew Baughman.
I, Andrew Baughman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution and laws.
Constitution and laws.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The Constitution and lo... the laws.
Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Ohio.
State of Ohio.
And the laws and ordinances.
Laws and ordinances.
Of the city of Heath, Ohio.
The city of Heath, Ohio.
That I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties required of me.
The duties required of me.
As a firefighter in the city of Heath, Ohio.
Firefighter in the city of Heath, Ohio.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Oh, I think it's... This is a... A nice evening. Andy can introduce you dad here a little bit, but his dad is retiring officially today with the city of Newark after...
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six with Newark, he has thirty-two years in the fire service. So, uh, he was able to shingle... Away, they were throwing a big party for you, right? His last shift to come to the swearing-in ceremony, so... Anyway, Andy started... Graduated night, what, 2006 from Heath High School. So he knew the area, they grew up over on Blue Jay and, um, left about a year ago, went down Little Beach to, uh, Ernie's Fortune. But, uh, we were able to get him back up here and, uh, prior to that, he'd served on the volunteer department. He was our most active volunteer. I think he got Firefighter of the Year, uh, before you departed and that was gone about a year and firefighter, parabolic, hazmat operations and is interested in becoming a fire inspector and had talked with the Grant Hospital, uh, their medical program over there and would like to continue with an instructor, Brady or whatever, to help train our people. But we're checking to have him and, uh...
You think you can turn him around?
If you need to. We usually have to keep, uh, somebody, a new applicant, a candidate, in training program for several months. Um, as of Monday, as of today, we're going to fourth tour of duty. But, uh, we're going to be turning loose here very quickly, so he knows the area, knows our equipment and such, so we're checking to have him. So, without further ado, uh, our uniforms have changed. We kind of got away from badges on a daily basis, but we still wear our dress uniforms. And let's have a... If you would, a penny. You can stick him everywhere you want. Have his dad go ahead and titties badge on him and, uh... Yeah, cause you're right, straight in.
Congratulations, Andy Baughman. Congratulations, Andrew Baughman.
Would you like to introduce? Uh, this is my dad, David Baughman, and my stepmother, Valerie.
Valerie for years.
No, I retired my way.
Okay, well, I don't get it as much.
Yeah, I started in seventy-three and retired.
Very good, congratulations.
That's what I was gonna say. I thought I'm just fine. Thanks, guys, congratulations.
Thank, uh, Councilor, you fired at this board?
Yes.
And the mayor, uh, did you think some factor you gave work?
Yeah, um, we've been reappointing Chris Healan and Sharon Becker to terms ending in December of 2015. Andy, that's your umbrella here too.
Oh, we're not doing very good today.
Hopefully Andy's memories matter. Again, it's all the elections and appointments. Uh, special orders committees, I'm just gonna announce now that there will be a special council meeting this Thursday, December twentieth at five-thirty P.M. Uh, the three things, the main things to be discussed that night would be the cleanup ordinance, the budget ordinance, and the health district ordinance. So make that out now. Everyone make sure we make it there, Thursday, December twentieth at, uh, five-thirty P.M. Unfinished business, there's none. Just communications, none. Visitors, coming to time visitors to speak, like to speak, approach the podium, state your name, address, all that kind of good stuff.
Social.
Don't see anybody coming home.
Good evening. Becky Goodwin, sixteen-eleven, Union Road. Have a couple of things. Um, first of all, it was mentioned in, uh, New Parks meeting that, um, he had lots of pop chocolate at the Yonkers during Christmas. I kind of hope John will chill up with that, so I just wanted to let you know that it went over well. He told me he was really moving with pop chocolate. Once he said, "Come back."
Thank you.
But just, just to highlight on them, they're the ones that sent biscuit and gravy to the food to us last year, not this past year, but last year. And John's last day is Wednesday. You all know, we go there every Monday night after here. So we're going to celebrate with John Wallace, who is the manager down there and donated all the chocolate and has helped, uh, the animal shelter with many endeavors there. So I just wanted to say if you're hungry or you want a piece of pie, come on down because we're gonna try to give him a send-off. Uh, he's going to another location.
I didn't mention that.
No, we're just one after, after here. He said, "We're just gonna celebrate," is what he told us.
Okay.
Um, he's moving to another location to be a front manager, so that's why he's leaving us. Um, we've been, um, sitting there, what, three and a half years, going there after meetings and stuff and a lot of times we get shoved outside and we're still talking when we lock the door, so I'm glad you've never been called for lording or loitering at Bob Evans. Um, anyway, just wanted to let you know about that because that they have been very good to us on many occasions. Secondly, um, as you all know, uh, Wayne and I decided to step up and help Chief Shepherd with some, uh, things for next year for the celebration of the fiftieth anniversary. And I just wanted to report what I've gotten so far. And, um, I haven't got the check yet, but, um, Beth Kelly from, um, local federal credit union has a fifty-dollar check available to me for the police department. Um, Gary Burwell, who is the general manager at Coglin Toyota, wanted to make sure that you knew he, uh, came forward and, uh, they donated twenty-five dollars. So I have that check. And, um, Clark Motor Company, I kind of, I wanted to go to businesses that have been here a while. I wanted to go to the people that, you know, they starved here. So, um, I'm still waiting to hear from his brothers, but Clark Motor Company gave us a hundred dollars also, so I've done about four hundred, they'll starve. Um, waiting on about six others to call me back, so, um... With that, um, I'd also like to say that, um, as most of us probably realize, our hearts are in Newtown, Connecticut, with all these children that's lost. And it made me think, you know, I have grandsons who are three and a half, closing in on four years old, and it made me think real hard about how well are we versed? How well is our safety? You know, it can happen here. And that would be a tough call to have to go meet those parents. And I just did safety courses credit for what they face, which you don't know what your parents, if they walk in that door, or that person. So, glad to mine. Thank you, Merry Christmas. And, uh, I'll be turning the rest of the checks over to Chief when I get out of here.
Thanks, very much. Becky, I'm sorry, you give us the fifty-dollar check from?
Fifty from local credit union.
Okay.
Any other visitors you'd like to speak? Seeing no less coming forward, we've got committee reports, finance and budget, Mr. Gray.
Mr. President, it's committee met this evening. One legislative request was to appropriate sixty-two thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars within the Capitol proof public tapes. Thirty-spirit, under other items. Order Alexander, uh, stated that we didn't discuss a special council meeting this Thursday. We'll look for cleanup ordinance, we'll get some reading proposed. Andy also had a very good suggestion for the civil service committee, suggest an amendment to consider rules change regarding rule three.
Order Alexander, now, please, you answer. Kim?
I just wanted to, uh, recognize that Shepherd, she is even a full point in my list of small cluster and it's good to see she's getting her degree in accounting, so she's doing very well and we're glad to have her. Thank you.
Thanks.
Public services, Mr. Mark.
Thank you, Mr. President. The public service will meet next Wednesday, the day after Thanksgiving, uh, at five.
Christmas.
Thanksgiving. Just checking to see if you... Anyway, next Wednesday, after whatever, on Tuesday. I'll be there.
I have nothing to add. No, thank you.
Public safety.
Mr. Johnson. Thank you, Mr. President. Two questions I could have deferred to council.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. President, uh, safety committee met, uh, Monday, December tenth, uh, terrific in, uh, Chief Dill Shepherd. Andrew, please, to our, uh, golf service, twelve-seventy-five, compared to eighteen-one, two thousand eleven. Offense, four, sir, one point five, compared to twenty-eight, arrest, forty, seventy-fourty. Accidents, thirty-nine, compared to twenty-eight, two thousand eleven. Citation, seventy-one, compared to sixty-eight. Overdose, eight, for two thousand twelve, uh, November nineteen, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. Here, the date, total of a hundred and thirty-five thousand, four hundred dollars. Compared to thirteen thousand, five-seventy-two thousand, I opened this year, date, two thousand eleven, a hundred and fifty-four dollars. Form thirty-three. Uh, Chief Shepherd wanted to revisit the two thousand thirteen. I just requested that amount was reduced from six thousand dollars to two thousand, thanks for providing B and B's levels. Uh, the chief said that the feed, use the badges, is about seven hundred dollars one time feed, or use the thighs, take the badges. And then it will cost additionally, that will be late. Dick Morrow said that we should, uh, maybe, uh, hold on, very few people, uh, considering the feed, the back issue. Uh, this ordinance is taken right now, uh, for the six thousand dollar amount. Uh, Tim Kelly asked mayor, how would be handled, I think, from fireworks, and they, uh, down, they're on the road. So, uh, Becky Goodwin said she has heard, asked, no, this is about how we respond, or something. Uh, Tim said, since this whole thing is never going to do, you can bring off the table and put in the amount that, uh, is needed, maybe enough, on to step up, uh, so we won't have to do that all the time. After number of discussions, Chief Mendel is reported five-thirty-five P.M. In fact, Chief, uh, public service is reporting fire department, uh, firearms, uh, thirty-eight, compared to seven thousand, uh, here, date, uh, four point two, compared to sixty, that's up sixty-two. EMS runs, a hundred twenty-eight, compared to twenty-five, uh, sixteen-seventy-nine, compared to eight-nine, a hundred seventy runs. Transports, eighty-five, compared to seventy-five, uh, here to date, uh, one thousand nineteen, compared to eight-hundred fifty-eight, which makes itself a hundred sixty-one. Uh, latest related request, none. Uh, monthly expense report, uh, two thousand twelve wages with, uh, three pages beginning in March, this was ninety-two thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars, fifty-one cents. Uh, November time, two thousand seven, fifty-four, three. Uh, total for the year is, uh, over seventy-six thousand, four hundred and six, eighty-one. Uh, equipment, rescue, six, uh, shifter touchpad, maybe here, replacing, cost of deep house, six hundred and eleven dollars. Sirens, oh, uh, no. That's, uh, many, not, uh, uh, hard, uh, ninety-nine sirens, that cost seven hundred dollars. Uh, fly brook, the overhead projector, which cost three hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Uh, wires were, uh, wired for number seven, that cost nine hundred and ninety dollars. Uh, other personnel, Andrew Baughman starts on twelve, eleven, twelve. Mayor Johnson, he was in the first groups interview, standing here. Uh, he was former volunteer, was one of the most active. Chief said it should not take very long to get through probation period, he knows the government, he like long, that's what he, he knows the streets. Other training, but a bag, lifting bag is in, we have, uh, all business, a maintenance account, uh, over, five thousand four ninety, puts in about ten thousand over, and EMS account is about eight thousand dollars. Uh, new business, none. Under other, uh, former chief, Rick Edwards, wife, Mark, is being treated from lung cancer. She just emailed about Thanksgiving, wish her well, and please keep through your prayers. Uh, Tim Kelly asked chief, what about sirens? Chief said we are, uh, across the forty-eight, they're going to ask, what chief, been purchased over the week? Chief said that, uh, in the works. Uh, Mayor Johnson wanted everyone to know, to be updated on the water, maybe ready to run, uh, one on parrot door, one, uh, line northbound, we show you through the time, we're dealing with, uh, that, where it's made. Uh, probably get, uh, help me to work on water line, on crack and everything, see that, that's that. Nothing else to report, we adjourned at six oh four P.M. Thank you, Mr. President.
Uh, excuse me, chief. I'll mention two things. One, Tim, uh, the, uh, after we talk about the safety, components are in and B and C seem to think that the end of this week, they'll have all the sirens, never abandoned, and components. So that's a good thing, and, uh, I have three members, uh, who have anniversaries in the month of September. I didn't have my chief, it'd be the first meeting of the month. Um, Roger Baker, a lieutenant with us, has thirteen years with the city of Heath. Brian Cox is celebrating his fifth year with the city. And Doug Brown has two years with the city. That's all I have, thank you.
Chief Shepherd.
Uh, I too, forgot my sheet, the last week, so I have, uh, uh, an officer celebrating his fifth year with the city, that's Brad Fisher. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Streets and grainings.
Mr. Heaven, ready yet?
Streets and grainings, uh, met this evening at five-thirty, five dollars, streets and, uh, important. Uh, first item on the agenda, the, uh, thirty street painting. John Groff, uh, had a legislature question, appropriate, are managed for this project, it's sixteen thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars. O-Dot needs our part by January the sixteenth of two thousand thirteen. This was passed on with the by. Uh, second item, second item, actually, uh, back up, excuse me, chief. Dick Morrow, uh, already, uh, talking about thirty street, said one of the possibilities, that they let current light, thirty, in the current drive. Uh, John Groff said, traffic analysis, uh, asking to shift it down, and then it was warned, uh, try to un-communicate the elk cats. Uh, Tim said, there are different variables that, uh, we decide, that's make, uh, these thirty lights in. Mayor, uh, mayor asked, uh, what would it cost, and Tim said, make twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars. Uh, Dick asked, uh, Mr. Groff asked, how do we proceed? John Groff said, that if we were to be, decide more, five to six thousand dollars. If we were to pay a whole hundred percent of that, we could do that. But traffic study was done, it would take four to five years, clear out gas, maybe eighty percent, a part of it. Uh, Bob is going to check the tape, then we can see what we already have, but, uh, this, uh, this thing. Uh, second item on the agenda, the block, we're on the seventy-nine, uh, patch in front of Mayor Door. We had water break, as I reported in the city, uh, we, we worried that the, uh, the contractors from the waterline, uh, roof line are fighting out there, that came over and, uh, did an exemplary patch, uh, against the spring. Uh, third item on the agenda, the use of the thorough patch in South Gate, compared to tracks, spots, uh, from, uh, weather beds. Also doing this with gold patch on, uh, on the paths, uh, throughout the city. Uh, trucks are prepared and ready to go, so do I, and, uh, salt, salt bars are full, and we ordered less than what we usually could do, uh, but we will still have to take eighty percent of what we have ordered. Uh, nothing else to report, uh, again, five, if we have.
Bob, anything you'd like to add?
Nothing, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, committee, open zoning, Mr. Henry, starting here, to the committee, uh, Parks and Recreation, Davis Shay, Mrs. Cole.
Thank you, Mr. President. Parks Recreation in Davis Shay met this evening at five fifty-two. First item on the agenda was the Victorian Christmas at the Davis Shay House. Um, one thousand six hundred and forty attended and toured the home. There was a show choir, show choir and harvest, and eighty gallons of hot chocolate was donated by Bob Evans. Um, executive director reported that it appeared they were twenty percent under budget, but Director Geller reported that was probably because decorations had been purchased the year before that will be used for years to come. Um, under Shay House expenses, Director Geller provided us with expenses from the period of January first to December seventeenth of two thousand twelve, which totaled forty-nine thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars and fifty-nine cents, compared to the same time period last year at four and six thousand, three hundred and ten dollars and twenty-three cents. Third item was replacing lights in the tunnel. There were lights busted out in the tunnel, the port authority that had to be replaced. Fourth item was related to graffiti. We're experiencing more incidences of graffiti, especially in the tunnels and under Route seventy-nine. And under other items, um, Director Geller just reported that, um, the park staff is busy doing reg- reg- regular maintenance on equipment and upkeep of the properties. General Dad Bob?
Nothing, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I need permission, Mr. Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President. We, uh, have no meeting planned for Sunday, I need permission. Or it's meeting through January twenty-fourth. Groff, anything to add?
No, thank you.
Mayor Johnson?
Nothing. Thank you. The branch is saying introduction of ordinances, ordinance seventy-eight, two thousand twelve.
Ordinance seventy-eight, two thousand twelve, and ordinance of ours, the mayor to enter, on Friday, Monday, Thursday, November, 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 council, repeating the defendants, please, Matt Piocon.
Mr. President, Mr. Gray. If we weigh the second reading, ordinance seventy-eight, two thousand twelve.
Second.
Have a motion in second to weigh, roll call.
Morrow.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Yes.
Heffley.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes. Motion to wait for the group.
Mr. President, Mr. Gray. Motion to adopt ordinance seventy-eight, two thousand twelve.
Second.
A motion in second to adopt ordinance seventy-eight, two thousand twelve, in special office. Seen none, roll call.
Morrow.
Yes.
Cole. Yes.
Yes.
Heffley.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes. Ordinance seventy-eight, two thousand twelve has been adopted. Okay, ordinance seventy-nine, two thousand twelve.
Ordinance seventy-nine, two thousand twelve, and ordinance, second, and a vacation, on this portion of our way, eleven thirty-eight, at twelve twenty, South Orange Street, for a tax vacation plan.
Ordinance seventy-nine, two thousand twelve, will be referred to planning commission. Ordinance eighty, two thousand twelve.
It's evening, two thousand twelve, and ordinance, we're in agreement, dispatch, with the board general, district, the city of Newark, and all persons directing the mayor. Just keep saying what we have to say, Heath, Ohio, and declare these regulations.
Ordinance eighty, two thousand twelve, behold a second reading, which will be this Thursday, December, uh, twenty. Ordinance eighty-one, two thousand twelve.
Ordinance eighty-one, two thousand twelve, and ordinance to make appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures for the city of Heath, and account required, like this for year and in December thirty-first, two thousand thirteen.
Ordinance eighty-one, two thousand twelve, also behold a second reading, which will be this Thursday, December, uh, twenty. The branch is the ordinance is on the second reading, ordinance seventy-seven, two thousand twelve.
Ordinance seventy-seven, two thousand twelve, and ordinance, section nine, two nine point four, sue charges, under the assessment of qualified witnesses, between the client, including the court's Sarah, and the client's saying to be a real estate.
Mr. Mark. Make a motion to adopt ordinance seventy-seven, two thousand twelve, second. Have a motion in a second, in the discussion's comment. Seen none, roll call.
Morrow.
Yes.
Cole. Yes.
Yes.
Heffley.
Yes.
Kelly.
Ordin- or, yes, ordinance seventy-seven, two thousand twelve has been adopted. Okay, that's all the ordinances on the second reading. Resolutions of first reading, air none, resolutions of second. Faces to report, society officials.
Mr. President, uh, bottomless intent tonight, uh, want to thank, uh, those volunteers that worked with, uh, the Shay House for the Tony Christmas event, uh, a couple of weekends ago. in Newtown, uh, Connecticut. It's, uh, um, something that is almost, uh, unavoidable for us, uh, this weekend. Um, and, uh, tragedy, I think that's kind of hard to wrap your, your brain around, uh, just how horrific, uh, uh, that day had to be for those families, uh, who lost, uh, uh, their kids, and, uh, the teachers and administrators, uh, in the school, the famous lost, uh, lost loved ones. Um, I, uh, want to let you all to know, earlier today, I sent, uh, an email to the principal at Garfield Elementary, and the principal at Stevenson Elementary, to copy, uh, superintendent format, as well as Chief Huggins and Chief Shepherd, uh, letting those principals know that if there's anything, uh, that, uh, if there's any way that they feel that either myself, or anybody else, uh, on the city staff could be of help, uh, to them at those schools, uh, perhaps trying to, uh, make them feel safe, um, or, uh, to reassure them, uh, that certainly myself, the chiefs, and, and anybody else on the city staff, do whatever we can to, to try to help them out, uh, so that our kids, uh, feel comfortable being able to go to school. Um, but it, obviously, it is something that, uh, gosh, if it can happen there, it can happen anywhere. Um, I also kind of want to end on, on, on this thought that's related. Honestly, there were, uh, twenty-seven, uh, people, uh, wounded, shooter, who, uh, lost their lives. The, um, it's my understanding that every day in the United States, we have thirty, uh, gun-related deaths, uh, about two hundred a week. You want to put that in perspective, imagine a commercial jet aircraft crashing once a week, every week. That's how many people in this country, uh, lose their lives in one way or another, uh, in a gun-related accident. Um, my hope is that, uh, on multiple fronts, um, this type of situation is off way out Friday in Connecticut, uh, and somehow be helped, uh, so that other communities and other families don't have to go through that experience again.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you.
Audrey, okay. Thank you, Mr. President. I have my comments to say.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I have, thank you.
Uh, I'll start with you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, yeah, I do, uh, the great mayor, uh, my condolences and thoughts and prayers, but those are new things, terrible, terrible thing, I think can explain it, so. Mr. Effley, thank you for, uh, taking care of my community report. I know that you grow, you know, the chiefs have a lot of time, so that's nice of you.
Pretty lucky.
You're a good guy, you don't, you don't need any money. Uh, Goodwins, thank you very much for donating the signs for the police products. And thank you very much for going out and being proud of the donations, because, uh, I think it's an important thing that we celebrate this, this milestone, with Andrew Halpern. I don't think it would, would happen, so I hope we did this stuff for the chief and for this officers and for the city in general. Uh, for those of you who aren't sure about winter, it is coming, I have proof, it's here in the room. It's about to be over here, it's coming. That's all I have to say.
Mr. Morrow. Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, congratulations to Mr. Goffman. Um, okay, this season, it's unbelievable, it takes five years to get a left turn signal. We'll work on it. And for everything else, very, very special.
Mr. Gray. Thank you, Mr. President. I, uh, I want to, uh, see, uh, thanks to Goodwin's support and, uh, very, very, uh, uh, also, I'd like to, uh, I kind of, here to comment, it's kind of tragic this weekend. Hopefully, we can all, a lot of, a lot better, stronger safety, nation. With that, I just say, uh, Merry Christmas to all, and all good night. Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Gray.
Congratulations, Ian Goffman. Prayers for families in Newtown, Connecticut. Tomorrow, it may take five years to get a turn signal, remember, it takes three thousand and eleven turn signal on Windville Road. Imagine that. I think for you, it's now, Merry Christmas to everyone.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to welcome everyone, say ditto to a lot of the things that have already been said, and just Merry Christmas. Merry holiday. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any, any. Uh, starting out with John Yeller. Uh, Jim Yeller.
Just want to wish you a wonderful, wonderful holiday.
John Yeller. John Groff.
Uh, just one thing. Well, you've noticed we've got some banners on State Route seventy-nine now. Uh, that's going to be asked, uh, I do want to thank Elaine and Becky, how they helped us to correct a lot of that, because we're, so, thank you very much, I appreciate you.
Uh, Chief Shepherd.
Well, I want to thank the Goodwins again for their, uh, help in city maintenance. You must like us, I appreciate that.
That's all. Chief Huggins.
Just happy holidays.
Uh, just a couple of things. Remember that we have a special meeting on December the twentieth, Thursday at five thirty PM. Um, got the three ordinances to go over on that. Uh, also, just like to mention that several of us went over to the, uh, Records Retention and Suns, Shining, uh, Seminar at Plumbus, uh, and, uh, and then those that weren't there, assigned to be in the boxy or whatever it's called for the people and stuff, so, uh, we're all.
Doesn't need.
Doesn't need, that's what I'm, yes, I did that. Um, and also, before that, went to the new casino to check it out. It's still there, and the lights are still on, so.
Thanks to your company.
That's been the meeting. Uh, that's about all I have. Uh, let's see, new business? None, reading the bids? Miss Lane is? None. Everyone, we have a motion to adjourn. Back at home, there's a, aye? Aye. Very, very, thank you, very, very.
I expect you to wear nice white shirts.